Good evening. I am Darcia Dearking, and on behalf of the League, I would like to welcome you to the City of Carver Candidate Forum. We thank both the candidates and the audience for attending tonight and our online audience for viewing. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose a political party or a candidate for office. The League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County has a longstanding history in our community of providing unbiased candidate and issue information that is widely used by Minnesota voters regardless of their political beliefs. Sponsorship of this forum is a public service providing you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss important issues face to face. The views expressed here tonight are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement by the League of any particular candidate. There is never enough time to cover all the issues. If you feel your question was not answered or addressed, please contact the candidate directly after the forum. And now I'll read a statement on Candidate Forum recordings. "The League of Women Voters sponsors candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political purposes." All candidates for Carver Mayor and Carver City Council were invited to participate. Candidates who chose to attend tonight are Mayor Candidates Matt Herman and Courtney Johnson and City Council Candidates Glenn Henry, Eric Pershman, and Lori Sayer. And now I would like to introduce our moderator. Jean Bringleau Pro is a certified moderator from League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County.
Good evening, everyone. We will start the candidate forum with the opening statements. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes for their opening statement and one and a half minutes for a closing statement. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order by office, starting with candidates for mayor and ending with candidates for city council. The order of answering questions and the closing statements will be rotated based on a randomly generated grid. Candidates will have up to one and a half minutes to respond to the questions. Depending on the complexity of the questions, I may announce less time per question. Please note our timekeepers who have a 30-second and a 15-second sign. They also have a stop sign, or we'll call time, to be sure each candidate has full time allotted. The first question has been prepared by the League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County. Additional questions will be those submitted by the voters here and those submitted by the League's email address. Let's begin with the opening statements. We will begin with candidate for mayor, Matt Herman.
The new guy right off the bat? I mean, really?
Welcome to the show.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'm Matt Herman. I've lived in the town roughly 22 years with my lovely wife and my two daughters. The reason why I'm running is obviously we have a large residential population coming in, and I would really like to see some offset with commercial industrial. If we look at Chaska, Chaska's done a great job. Obviously, their population's larger, but they've done a great job doing the balanced offsetter tax base. My other focus is we want to make sure that we have an election integrity as well as transparency. So, those are some of my focuses. I also will be very responsible with other people's money. I'm a general contractor, so I'm in charge of not only managing my own budget, but those budgets of other folks. And so, that's why I'm running for mayor.
Thank you. And Courtney Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Johnson, and for the past four years, I have had the extreme pleasure of serving as the mayor of the City of Carver. I'm proud of what the city has accomplished under my leadership. The Jonathan Carver Parkway construction and the water system expansion, which will ensure the city's infrastructure will keep up with the needs of our growing city. The pavement management plan, which provides a funding source to ensure the city streets in the more established parts of town are maintained. And we've welcomed 15 commercial industrial businesses, which broadened our tax base and brought hundreds of jobs to Carver. I've also worked hard during the past four years to improve transparency with the city. I've insisted we broadcast our work sessions and have engaged and informed residents about what's going on in their community through consistent communications. I've lobbied on behalf of the City of Carver to secure more than $2.7 million in grants for the levy improvement project, which will keep our historic downtown safe and remove the restrictions to our residents and property owners in the floodplain. I've lived in Carver for the past 12 and a half years, and I've been involved in our community since shortly after moving here. Professionally, I'm an independent communications consultant and small business owner. I have a strong business acumen and lengthy communications experience, which benefits me in this role as mayor. I'm running for mayor because I have the experience, the dedication, and I know I'm the best person to serve the City of Carver for the next four years. I'm committed to our community and dedicated to its progress.
Thank you. And now we will hear from Glenn Henry.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League for having this forum. It's always a pleasure coming in here and answering any and all questions from everybody that's in here. Been a longtime resident of Carver. Our family moved to Carver in 1972, and I took out sabbatical and moved out to the East Coast, but I've been living in Carver since 2000. Reason I'm running again for Carver is there's a few more things of the infrastructure that I would like to see in place, so that way we can support our businesses that will be coming here and more citizens that are moving into Carver. I have experience. I'm running for my fourth term, and experience goes a long way in making decisions because I like to deal with the facts and I don't like dealing with emotional responses.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Council Candidate Eric Pershman.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Eric Pershman, and I am the new guy as well and the challenger to these two folks for a seat on city council. I'm a 23-year resident of Carver, having grown up in Chaska. I come from a civil service family with a view that public service is the mechanism that betters our community for my children and my neighbors. I acted on that. Joining the Park and Recreation Board with the help of Chris Kimmack, who now sits on this council, we engaged citizens to ask what they wanted, and the skate park was one of the successful results. After that, I was on Planning Commission, and I facilitated some deliberation over the Carver Crossing Apartments. I was a tie-breaking vote for that, and you'll find that life cycle housing is a core tenet of mine for the City of Carver. My professional life has also been in public sector with 25 years of building communications infrastructure. That's the stuff that allows the sheriff to run your license plate, all the stuff you don't see. I've served on advisory boards. I've been a liaison for state agencies, ensuring public safety during planned and unplanned events. I'm running for city council with experience, dedication, and commitment to do the work of the city and ensure its progress.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Lori Sayer, Council Candidate.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lori Sayer. I've been on the council for almost four years. Previous to that, I was a commissioner on the Planning Commission for about two years. I've been a resident of Carver for 22 years. I've been married for 26 years. My husband Chad and I have two daughters. Our oldest, Jordan, is a recent graduate of Chaska High School. She's now a freshman at University of Minnesota, the Twin Cities. And then our other daughter, Carly, is a sophomore at Chaska High School and works at the Carver Ridge Senior Housing and Food Service. I enjoy connecting with others within the community, being involved as previously a commissioner and on the council. I also find it really rewarding seeing the long-term plans that with the council and city staff are working on, such as like trail connections. Every time I'm on what I still call Snake Road and just see more connections to it with the old road to the llama farm, just being able to see more people utilize that trail. Those type of things I find rewarding, as well as just public service. And I also come from a family with a public service background. So, thank you.
Thank you. We will now have our first question, and our questioning will begin with Lori. What is the biggest challenge facing Carver?
The biggest challenge facing Carver? At first, I'm like thinking of two different answers. I'm thinking just of like as the city and what residency is really just balancing that residential growth with the industrial business growth to have additional funding sources. So, I see that. Also, at a council level, my biggest challenge is balancing what's right for the city and what's right for the residents. That is, the good thing is we're never making a split-second decision. That's why, that's one of the things that I like and I feel like I'm good at with the city council, is the decisions that are brought in front of us are usually things that we've been working on, whether it be work sessions or it was something we talked about five years ago in the five-year plan. So, that's kind of the easy part, knowing what's coming up on the agenda. But the real challenge is when you make the decision, balancing what's right for the city and what's right for the residents. Thank you.
And now we'll hear from Glenn.
Biggest phase, biggest challenge facing Carver is balancing the growth of the industrial and the residential growth. We've done a lot as a council to put in the proper infrastructure to lure businesses and residential developments to town. The budgeting for the utilities and our new city hall and our water treatment facility. That infrastructure was critical to open up avenues of development to come to Carver. Since I've been on the council, we've had six major developments, and Carver has grown from a population of about 2,800 when I first got on the council to a little over 6,000 now. And the growth of the residential is coming right along. We'll have to see what the inflation factor does now for residential moving, but as far as the industrial areas, I do know that there are some developments that are looking at Carver to move in and expand our industrial base.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Matt.
So, I'll just echo what the last two had spoke about, but I think it's important. We're gonna have to really solicit these commercial businesses, these industrial businesses to sell Carver to them. We're not, we don't want to wait for them to come here. It's urgent. The other thing is the safety aspect. So, we have, we have a growing residential base, and we have a sheriff's office. One of the things I think we could immediately do is try to help them bring on another K-9 unit. And so, the reason why I say this is because there's an upfront fee with the K-9, maybe $5,000 to $20,000, right? Green dogs, five brand with the genetics, the nerves, the training could run about $15,000. But the aspect is, is they don't miss work. They show up and want to go to work, and that officer has a partner to fight crime with. And so, yeah, we live in a safe neighborhood. We live, the town's safe, but we really don't know unless you talk with the sheriff, the areas of opportunity that we really need to look at. So, that's one of the things I propose.
All right. And now we'll hear from Courtney.
All right. I think one of the biggest challenges is growth in the City of Carver, and it's a challenge and it's an opportunity because Carver's growing. Our growth is inevitable. And just in the past four years, the amount of commercial businesses that we've seen, we have Carver Ridge, we've got Lakeview Industries, we've got QuickTrip. We've got smaller businesses downtown that are owned by community members, Carver residents who have put their heart and souls into these businesses. Charlie McSalon, the Getaway Motor Cafe, which will be opening this fall. We, I think, we have our comprehensive plan, which will guide our development as far as residential, commercial, industrial. We know where that will all go when that comes into the city. Infrastructure as part of growth is also a challenge. But again, that's guided not only in our comprehensive plan, but fiscally with our long-term financial plan, so that we know that when we get another industrial user, which we are starting to have talks with and we're making progress on, we know that we might have to rejigger things in that order. Welcoming new residents, making sure that they're welcome, that they understand what's going on and where they can get their information, so there aren't any surprises. Keeping folks informed. It's all a delicate dance, but I think that through the city's planning, we've done a good job of managing that growth and making sure that we know what the future growth for the City of Carver will look like.
Thank you. And now Eric.
Well, goodness, I'm gonna follow a common theme here. We have three times the population we did in 2000, so we're growing fast. The, I think, infrastructure leads that. So, the pain people feel from that is why are my utility bills so high? Why is my water bill so high? The city is challenged with keeping infrastructure on pace with the growth of the city, oversizing infrastructure, so we're not ripping and replacing 10 years from now. Really looking forward in the next 10 years and through the 2040 comprehensive plan to make sure that the water infrastructure is there, so we don't get an alert that we have to not water the lawn and not flush the toilets and add another million and a half gallons capacity to the city's water. So, infrastructure, part of that, though, is the, well, I think we'll get to life cycle housing, rooftop spring development, and we'll talk about that further as we, as how that impacts our infrastructure development.
All right. And our second question is, please give us your thoughts on the Design Carver 2040 Comprehensive Plan and the Long-Term Financial Plan. And we will begin with Eric.
Well, I'm one of the less qualified people, I think, to answer that as I haven't been part of the development of the 2040 Plan. I actually worked on the 2030 Plan through Planning Commission. However, that said, I am confident that we have talented city staff and an elected body that has, that has put together a responsible projection for 2040 development. I, I think the city in its current iteration with the current mayor is taking all of the right steps to really, like I said, with infrastructure, to be oversizing and move the city towards, towards proper development. When it comes to the fiscal side of it, I think the worry is, well, how much is that gonna cost me? How much is that gonna add to my taxes? And we've done a remarkable job of lowering taxes. We might not feel that because our house prices keep increasing in value, but as we move towards 2040, in fact, in 2023, we'll see a reduction in the tax rate for our homes. So, the short answer is I think the city is on the right path and is doing a good job. I'm not here to change that.
All right. And now we'll go to Lori.
So, my thoughts on the Design Carver 2040 Comprehensive Plan is that I do have good knowledge of it just because I was on the Planning Commission as, as part of that was being developed, and that it's something within the council that we often go and look to. But I just know a lot more on who was involved in it, and that was interesting for me as having previous experience as a resident. I, I was pretty vocal about some things near my house, whether it be a drainage ditch or a, a my pillow. And at that time, I didn't understand how far in advance things need to be planned out, and you can just go so many directions without a guide. So, I just see that at least gives you a starting point, a guide. But in addition to that, I've really learned in the last four years how much the city staff and what we use for consultants, the engineering, the law firm, are really involved. We definitely had competent team members that are experts in that area, because I'm not, and that it was just truly a collaboration. So, for that part, I feel just very comfortable and proud of what we have for the 2040 Comprehensive Plan in regards to the long-term financial. We've seen some real changes, not in numbers and like how the columns look, but just how it's communicated with our new financial director. So, I'm excited to be learning from her and continue to work on the long-term financial plan. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Courtney.
So, the question was how well do we know with the long-term financial plan and Design Carver? And I'd say I know it pretty well. I was involved in the creation of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, but what was great about that is it was a collaborative process. So, we let the community get involved with that process as well. So, they were able to provide feedback. They were part of the group that decided that future industrial is gonna go up here, and we're gonna have high-density housing here. So, it was collaborative and reactive. It outlines everything that we need to get to where we think we're gonna be in 2040. How far will the growth go? Where will the streets go? What are we gonna need in terms of infrastructure improvements? So, that is really our guiding principles, all-in-one plan, that we can look to development. And anybody who's moving to the City of Carver, you know, I'll never buy a house the same way again, and I've said that before. You should take a look at the comprehensive plan so that you know that that field behind your house isn't gonna be a field in perpetuity. As far as the, the long-term financial plan goes, that is our long-term plan for the city. So, we know when the city is gonna need certain investments, be it in infrastructure, be it in staff, be it a new truck for the fire department, or when we're gonna need new SCBA's for those folks. And that really gives us an idea. Again, nothing's written in stone, and we can move around the deck chairs as development continues or as we have different priorities. Thanks.
And now we'll go to Matt.
Yeah, just real quick. If we don't lower our water bills and if we don't start to approve businesses that want to come in, and I'll use the example, my neighbor owns Mitzi's Pizzas, Pizza and Belt Plant, and he's coming here in Carver, which is awesome. Took him a year to get his license approved. That's unacceptable. So, if we don't start changing things, we won't have a 2040 Plan.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. Glenn.
2040 Comm Plan. The 2040 Comm Plan was a collaborative effort put forth by many people in the community, Planning Commission, the Heritage Commission, the Parks Commission. Everybody put forth their ideas and where they would like to see Carver grow, whether it be north on Jonathan Carver Parkway, west of Jonathan Carver Parkway. Many people, many people put forth their ideas, and the city acted on them, and we put together a pretty good plan for where we'd like to see Carver in the year 2040. One of the long-term plan investments that we had to move up a little bit was A, the city hall, B, the water treatment facility. Two major infrastructure projects that took time to put together, but in doing so, the plan came together. And so, for the year 2040, just outlining where the industrial parks are gonna be, where the development, residential developments are gonna be. It's, some things do take time.
All right. And our third question is, how important is the flood levy recertification project for Carver? And what actions, if any, would you take to make this $12 million project happen? And we will begin with Glenn.
The levy project has been, we've been researching this project for the better part of 20 years. Long before I was on the council, they just talked about, what are we gonna do about the levy? I will say that Mayor Johnson's done a great job in running down senators and at the State House and at the federal level to land some grant money so we can lessen the burden of the levy to the citizens. As far as what it's gonna do, it will lower the insurance rates for every citizen in downtown Carver. I know that their flood insurance is high, and we need to lower that burden to help bring businesses back into downtown. But what will it do for Carver? It'll open up avenues to the parks. For the long-range part of the 2040 Plan is the parks on, right on the other side of the levy. There's a lot to the plan, and it's the way that the, our representatives have come forward to help us land revenue streams will help Carver with the, with the levy.
All right. And now we'll hear from Matt.
Well, it's obviously very important, everything that he just mentioned. It's also important, we're gonna have to be physically responsible, and it's gonna be a balancing act. But we have to, we absolutely have to address it to ensure that for the future of Carver.
Okay. And now we'll hear from Eric.
Well, I think it's pretty important. I think we have a gem in downtown Carver. A lot of cities don't have a historic district like we do. I was really surprised to learn how that levy was constructed in the first place. It's not as secure as you might think, and it was never approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. I thought we were trying to get it recertified. We're not. It never was. So, and as Glenn said, the folks in downtown have high insurance and uncertainty, and I think we can also be sure that extreme weather events hit us more often. I think every year, we're at more risk of something catastrophic happening downtown. So, if we want to preserve what we have, if we want to attract more businesses, if we want to make this, keep this the center point of Carver, the levy has to be a priority. I agree. I think Courtney's done a great job looking for some grant money to do that study. It's kind of been going on for 20 years, but I think there's momentum to really move this forward. So, I'm, I'm excited about that in the next four years. I think it's an important project for the city.
Okay. And next, we will hear from Lori.
Yeah. So, as far as how important is the levy project? I think very important. I think it's phenomenal what Mayor Johnson's been able to do, that she's secured $2.7 million of grant money for the levy. I learned more about it just being engaged with community members and business owners, so I know a lot more of why I put so much emphasis and importance on it and what action I will take is really just to continue to collect those stories and do what I can do to support the mayor as she or he continues to promote or kind of tell her story with legislation. So, some of those stories are, I didn't know that, well, I think it's kind of common, this thing about like it's really hard to get insurance or it would cost a lot for the flood insurance. But for someone to have their business there, and maybe it's a retail, they need to insure that inventory, well, that would be quite a bit to do that in a flood district. So, there's that part. And then just recently, I was in a really nice historical home with a beautiful garden, and the, one of the homeowners, Sandy, anyways, she invited us into her house. And I always thought the flood would be like, okay, I'll see it. Like, it's gonna go over, you know, the bank or, you know, over the actual levy. It would come through their basement. So, there is just a lot of those stories. I want to hear more about them. I want to hear more about them, because I think those stories, it tells the story of Carver and will help us keep that historic charm. Thank you, Jean.
And now we'll hear from Courtney.
Thank you. You know, we've got a lot of priorities in Carver, but the Minnesota River Levy and getting that certified and funded, not in that order, is right up there. I am proud of the progress that we have made as a city. I think we've made more progress perhaps in the last four years than we have in a little while. And part of that was a previous council shift from working with the Army Corps of Engineers to going the private engineering route. But I have worked with state and federal and watershed resources to get more than $2.7 million in grants that the city will put towards that levy. The thing that I've always said is I don't want to have to levy for the levy, meaning that that won't necessarily come out of your tax bill. So it's a $12 million project. That was a January of 2022 number. So we all know what inflation has done, and I anticipate that it's gone up higher than that. The city's match for this project right now is right around $3 million. So with that $2.7 million, we are well on our way. You know what, I think we've already reached the match number. So I think the match is more like $2.5 million. So with the $2.5 million that we've received from the feds, we've effectively crossed that threshold of the match that we'll need. So if we can continue to encourage, which I think we're all working to do, our legislators in St. Paul to come up with bonding bills when they're supposed to, we will continue to get funds from the Minnesota DNR's Flood Mitigation Program, and we will continue to have that funded. We've already reached our match. And we just need to keep the pedal on the gas for this project.
All right, now we'll go to question number four. What measures, if any, would you propose to reduce carbon emissions in the city of Carver? And we will start with Courtney.
Sure. You know, we have a council member who is not up for election, so she's not joining us this night, tonight. But she was the reason why we're part of the Green Step Cities program. So the Green Step Cities program gives us thresholds, and there are items to check off of our list to continue to reach that goal of reducing carbon emissions and to be, as the name implies, a greener city. So I would say to continue to follow along with that program. I've also heard from folks, as we're seeing our friends and neighbors and fellow council members get more electric vehicles, the city of Carver, save for the public or the private infrastructure, the folks who have chargers in their homes, we don't have any public charging stations in the city of Carver. So I think that that's an opportunity too, and that's on my, my horizon to look into further.
All right. And now we'll hear from Eric.
So the easy things are encouraging folks to get electric cars. That sounds great. However, you know, there's a balance there. What's, what's the offset to produce the car and emissions globally? So I don't know that that's the only answer. I think we look at carbon capture as well with the city. And that might be working with the watershed district to encourage more dense natural plantings. Also helps with water runoff and control. Intense use of, so, city vehicle, city vehicles that are in constant use, maybe something for public works, where you've got a high-output emission vehicle. That might be a bit of a solution. But electric cars itself is, is, is a great easy target. I think we need to do more with carbon capture as best we can through initiatives and maybe some grants for people to do things on their properties or with commercial development to do carbon capture.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Lori.
Yep, so as far as what measure I will take and actually have already taken to reduce the carbon capture is, within the city, we, and I voted yes and I would continue to. We were, and as far as like what my position is, I supported a electric vehicle within our fleet of city vehicles that's used for building inspector. On a personal level, I don't have an electric car, and I don't see myself getting one soon. But it's, I feel like a good example of the first question that was posed, as far as challenges. And then I had said balancing what's right for the city and what's right for the residents. So for something like that, for what measures to take, I have to think of more, what do the residents want, what's right for the city? It's not something that I personally decide to do for my purchase. But enough residents have said, and there's a lot of people, that that's a big deal to them. And so I want to, you know, have that be part of what Carver is and be able to give that balance. So that's how I have supported it and most likely would when that type of question or decision comes in front of the council. Thank you.
And now we'll hear from Glenn.
Well, I'm not a proponent for the Green Step program that we voted for. It was a 4-1 vote that I did not vote for because when I looked at about step number 27 of the 34 steps, that's when it started to really impact the regulations that we're going to start to vote for, to, for businesses and for residential to, it's going to raise our, it's going to raise the cost of their housing. It's going to raise the cost of running a business. And as far as the green vehicle, I didn't vote for that either because it was about $12,000 more for the same vehicle, just having an electric vehicle so we can check it off on our Green Step program. I didn't think was, the juice was worth the squeeze on that one. But I can honestly say that of anybody on this council or probably anybody in this room, I'm the only one who has solar panels on my roof. I do that for my personal reasons. And I think that reducing emissions, the carbon emissions, is more of a personal choice between residential people. And I don't believe that the government should be mandating what people do or don't do with their emissions.
Thank you, and now we'll hear from Matt.
So Minnesota, we have about 2.3% of the population that has electric vehicles. And that's due to obviously our cold weather in the winter. So we still have to prepare for the future, so we are going to need charging stations. But I would like to kill two birds with one stone. What if we brought in a startup company that was working on improving the battery life in cold weather, say below zero? And then we could hit the industrial or the commercial as well as improve the infrastructure for the charging stations?
All right, now we'll go to question five. Sometimes residents are assessed to pay for city improvements. Please share your thoughts on how those assessments should be determined and whether there should be any assistance provided to help make those payments? And we will start with Matt.
So this one's near and dear, because up on Curche Hill Road, we still have people paying a $38,000 assessment from years ago. Cindy, I know you spoke with Gerald in town. I thought you were fantastic. You two had a great exchange. We should definitely help them out, because you look at the economic conditions that's going on right now, and you're talking about a $38,000 assessment on a $225,000 house. Here's the other issue I have, is when we base property tax, we're basing it off the current market value. So right now, we're coming off a high real estate market value. So my question to the voters is, when our housing prices fall down, let's say $50,000 by this time next year, which could very well happen. If I had a crystal ball, though, I'd be on a yacht over the Caribbean. Anyway, are they going to lower, is the city going to lower our property tax based off of our current, of, off of those current future values? Probably not. So we have to offer some assistance for those folks up on Curche Hill.
Okay, and now we'll hear from Lori.
Jean, can you repeat the question?
Sure. Sometimes residents are assessed to pay for city improvements. Please share your thoughts on how those assessments should be determined and whether there should be any assistance provided to help make those payments?
I swear my husband could have wrote that question in. I was part of the 2019 street improvement. So now on my property tax, I see that line item. So I see it from many perspectives. And as far as how it's determined, I know it's a grueling task for the city staff and for the council to then approve. But there's a lot of input from just, beyond just market values and the engineers and things. So I feel like that we're doing the best we can on that. And, and I mean, it can continuously be examined for improvement, but I feel like it's determined a fair way. What we do is very common to others, that what we do is very similar, is probably most cities do. And I just know that from the information that we were given in the presentations that were brought in front of the council. As far as any assistance, I, for me, you know, being able to stretch it out over a period of years into our property tax was the assistance, assistant helped us rather than paying it upfront. The other thing is the street ones aren't really significant. The ones that have been on well water and they have known for years that a big expense was coming up, that's where you're getting the ones that are well over $10,000, if not double, triple. So that's different because it was determined years before, so it shouldn't be a surprise.
And now we will hear from Eric.
So it is a complicated process. And I think the city of Carver does a competent job in sorting that out and assessing those values. As Lori said, one of the steps is breaking it up over a number of years so it doesn't impact you all at once. What's a step we can take to maybe minimize that? That might be a franchise fee. So someone who has access to rights of a cable company, MetroNet, somebody like that, and using those franchise fees to help offset some city, some of the maintenance costs or improvements costs. But, you know, beyond that, I, again, I trust that city staff and city council has done a good job in dealing with the necessary evil of city improvement and that cost.
All right, and now we'll hear from Glenn.
The way the assessments are, is an 80/20 split. The city pays for 80% and the citizens pay for 20% of the value that is on their streetfront property. So if you have a 100-foot property line, you're going to pay probably more than somebody with a 75-foot property line. It's broken down by, it's broken down by your actual square footage of your, or square foot, the linear footage of your access to the improvement areas. It doesn't, it doesn't alleviate the pain, but you are offered an upfront, you can pay it off immediately, or you can put it on your mortgage and, and pay it down that way. I know that when it was done in the 80s, my parents decided to pay it all upfront so they wouldn't be assessed it over the term of 15, 20 years. I know it's difficult, but the improvements that, that we're making in Carver, most of these are taken, most of the construction and, and, and work is done in downtown. Now it's just going to be with the road maintenance program to, to keep the, the streets up to speed.
And now we'll hear from Courtney.
I think for a lot of what we do, the hardest thing is making sure that we're being consistent in our policies, so that we're treating Cindy and Phil and Andrea all the same way. Years before the 2019 project, we hooked up well and sewer to the homes on Skyview Lane, and those folks were assessed for that. So that when we were kind of going through the numbers, we knew that we would have a bunch of residents yelling and screaming if we waived these fees. The other thing was, the funding mechanism that we use, the bonding that we use, and you probably might not be aware of this, but again, what Glenn said was the 80/20 split. So we needed to assess 20% of that to the residents. What we did is we went through, and there was a appraisal, and we couldn't assess more than what the home's value was going to increase with these additions of city sewer and water. So that's where we got the number. The other portion of that assessment was the water access charge and the sewer access charge, the wagon sack fees that every new home in the city of Carver receives. Those homes in, on Curche Hill were built in the early 1980s. So those wells and septics were near the end of their useful life expectancy. And it was also part of a larger project in town. There was construction on Skyview Lane, there was construction on Elm, there was construction down here, and all of those folks had different levels of an assessment.
All right, and now we'll go to question number six. Carver is a growing community. What steps should be taken to ensure the city's infrastructure, roads, water, maintenance, et cetera, can support this growth? And we will begin with Courtney.
I think, I feel like I, I answered this a little bit, and my question is the biggest challenge. So as we grow, we're going to have more needs. But it goes back to that comprehensive plan that lays out where the future development areas are, what needs to be done as far as infrastructure, the sewer, the water pipes that go underneath the streets. We invested $12 million in our water treatment plant up on Mount Hope Road within the last two years to double our capacity of the water that's treated from the ground that comes into our homes. So that's a really big investment that we've made in our community as far as infrastructure. There's the levy project. How are we going to pay for all of this, you ask? Well, that's part of our long-term plan, and we have things written down, like we're going to need another well. And while I know where I can find a long-term financial plan, I don't have that committed to memory, but maybe we need another well in six years. That's written into there. We also have oversizing charges, so that when we have new developments go in west of Jonathan Carver Parkway, we don't say, oh, we got to rip up the entire street all the way back to JCP because we didn't have the infrastructure large enough, that the pipes were too small. So we're making smart investments with a long-term view in the city of Carver.
And now we'll go to Glenn.
Stole my thunder.
Again.
The growing community, it goes back to what I ran on 12 years ago was we need to have the proper infrastructure for growth. In doing that, it wasn't, we found out four years, or yeah, four years ago that our water supply was at a critical, critical stage. And so the water treatment facility got moved up on the long-range plan. And that was a major step for the growth of Carver, just making sure that we have the water and the sewer and everything up to speed for growth into the 2040 and beyond. Oversizing of the, of the sewer lines and the water supply lines, we pay for that as a city, the oversizing charge. Most of the developers pay for what would normally, it would, what it would normally cost, but we pick up the oversizing so that way, planning for the future, we can have the proper growth and the proper amount of, of lines and sizes for the growth that will be coming.
All right, and now we will go to Matt.
So when I think infrastructure, I mean, these are all great comments, but I'm also thinking about the schools. So we just had a, we just had an addition go up on the other school, I'm sorry, in the new school up on the JCP. And given all the residential that's going in, it's, it's kind of apparent they're going to have to do another addition. So we're going to have to really sit down and, and figure this out for the future of what we're going to need for these kids, because it's an investment in our future, so.
And now Eric.
I'm only adding to what has been said by Glenn and Courtney. I think, you know, the city's job is to spend the money wisely and provide some value for that and the things that we can control. District 112 controls our District 112 controls our schools, but we can control oversizing. We can be bold and spend the money now that ensures that we're right-sized for development 10 years and 20 years from now. It's, it's a bill that we have to pay, and I think explaining the value of where that money is going today is, is something that we do a much better job through the website, through the newsletter that you get explaining infrastructure build, but it's, it's being bold and making those decisions. And it's going to be painful for a while. We're not Plymouth or Eaton Prairie. We have years of development ahead of us. We need to just ensure that we're providing value for those development dollars. But I can't, I can't add more than what's been said. I agree with that.
And now Lori.
I'd like going last. So in regards to Carver's growth and ensuring infrastructure, definitely, and we're planning for it, I see the need and the importance and just all good things for oversizing the infrastructure, so that we're not in a position where we have to rip and replace. That's my short response. Thank you, Jean.
All right. Our next question. Housing is an important element in commercial and industrial development. What are your thoughts on what the city should do to encourage affordable housing for people to be able to both live and work in Carver? And we will start with Lori. Sorry, I know you like to go last.
I shouldn't have said that. Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Housing is an important element in commercial and industrial development. What are your thoughts on what the city should do to encourage affordable housing for people to be able to both live and work in Carver?
10, five years ago, I would not have agreed that it was important. I just really see such a difference, just learning more about community development, that how important it is to have the housing, and whether it be lifecycle, workforce housing, but definitely to have people to live and get transportation to their work is just really changed within our environment as far as not just the economics, but just, you know, making it, you know, sustainable for a business. So kind of balance, it's again, back to that balance part of balancing, bringing in the businesses as well as providing the stable housing. So I do think it's very important. The city, we're doing more, and it's not on our own. Any of this is going to continue to be collaboration with other entities, whether it be CDA, there's different groups, so we're learning about that and continuing to support things such as, which will, which will likely be an additional housing. And I can't think of the name right now, because so many of our names are similar. I feel like it has the word ridge in it, but that's definitely something I support, just because it's what we need to balance, what's right for the residents, the city, and future businesses. Thank you.
And now we will hear from Glenn.
Encouraging workforce housing. We've collaborated with the CDA in the past. There's the potential, while we're looking at another building, CDA's got to put some numbers together, but it's an important facet to the growth of Carver. As far as, as the lifecycle, we'd like to have people that are born in Carver, raised in Carver, work in Carver, and retire in Carver. It's always been, it's always been a focus of the council. How can we have people stay here? Finding and helping with different avenues of financing for these projects is always a challenge. Federal money is scarce right now, but hopefully that will come around. But as far as affordable housing, if it's a single-family residential house, the going rate now is about $440,000 to get a foot in the door. That's simply because of the cost of materials, cost of land. It's not the most, it's not the most opportunistic, but we are working through some, some.
You're good.
Well, now, well, now here's from Courtney.
So the question was the importance of workforce housing as it relates to industrial development, and you're right, like those go hand in hand together. Last week, I was fortunate to be part of the Carver County Commerce Corridor Tour, which is a lot of Cs and really hard to say. What that was is it was something that one of our county commissioners, Matt Urdeman, set up with Greater MSP. So we had two representatives from Greater MSP, which if you're not familiar, they're the group that kind of really are the connectors between a lot of industrial who is potentially looking for a new site. So they serve to facilitate those arrangements, those agreements, those relationships. So we took a bus tour throughout the community, and I was able to, when the bus came to Carver, stand up in the front and say, this is our community. This is the area on our comprehensive plan, that's the future industrial development. This is where our workforce housing is. The biggest takeaway of that day was that the woman said how important workforce housing is in industrial development. You need to have a place for folks to live, and it's not necessarily in a $500,000 home that's being built up on the hill in the city of Carver. I'm also proud of this council for the work that we've done in the area of affordable housing. This year, we came up with our housing action plan, and then we also are working on, or have worked on a, a fee waiver program, where whack and sack fees that I referenced earlier will be reduced based on a percentage of affordability as it relates to the area median income. And there are very stringent requirements on that, but that's a really good carrot for affordable.
Now we'll hear from Matt.
So affordable housing, yes, but we also have to make sure we have the infrastructure to support that. We want to make sure these folks, it goes along with the commercial industrial that we have been talking about, because these folks also need a place to go grocery shopping, they need a place to go get their hair cut, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, and now we'll hear from Eric.
So unfortunately, the city doesn't get to decide who comes in and who the developers are, but when they do, when we have the opportunity, like the CDA coming in, we need to jump on that. I championed the Carver Crossing development when that was in deliberation, and I, it was rewarding that it was built. So the things that we can do, what can we do? We can use TIF financing, we can do connection fee waivers. There are things we can do to help those developers and make it attractive for them to come in and do that. Its importance is we need to have multi-dwelling housing, and we need to accept that in the city. Single-family homes are not going to exist for $250,000 anymore. It just isn't possible. It's $201 a square foot to build a new house now. So we need to embrace multi-dwelling units. We need to use every tool in the toolbox. Courtney, you mentioned whack and sack fees. Anything we can do so that a CDA or a similar organization wants to, to put those up, not just workforce housing, but senior housing. I'm sure my kids don't want me to stick around forever, but I'd like to have more senior housing in Carver as well.
All right, our final question. How will you work productively with those who do not share your opinions? And we'll start with Eric.
Well, that is the nature of our political discourse today, isn't it? So that's, I think, all politics is local. That's a common saying, isn't it? But I think we can rise above that. I think we can rise above the, the single platform issues. I think we can rise above the, kind of the flagging of trust in government, faith in government. Everybody on the council is building on years of, of work from past mayors and past city councils. I think we can all find commonality. We're not sending Supreme Court justices up for votes. We're not making decisions that affect people's personal lives, like with, with Supreme Court decisions. We're making the lives of people better in Carver. We all are each other's neighbors. I think that is inherent in all of us to do that. So I, I think that's, everybody has done a good job of that, and I think that will continue.
All right, now we'll hear from Courtney.
So working productively with those who don't share our opinions, I would argue that there's the potential to have that at every single one of our city council meetings, right? Because we have five individuals with five sets of opinions. For me, how to work productively is based off of the relationship building. I think at heart, I'm a relationship builder. So getting to know these folks, knowing where they're coming from and what makes them think that way, and then trying to look through the lens of where they're coming from when we're making these decisions. I think it's also about compromise, because, you know, we're seeing things get stalled out in St. Paul and in Washington, because folks have an R or a D or even an I behind their name, and that's where the compromise stops. At the city of Carver, when you're elected, it is a nonpartisan role. So, you know, while I know the people that I serve with well enough, that I can probably have a pretty good idea of what side of the aisle they fall on, it's not partisan politics. And in my opinion, that's why we get more stuff done. It's also part of the mutual respect and just the history of having worked together. So I think it's really building those relationships and understanding not only where the folks who sit on this side of the dais are coming from, but where the folks on that side of the dais are coming from, talking to folks, understanding their issues, and working through them, and hopefully coming to resolution.
And now we'll hear from Lori.
So as far as how, how I work with, productively with people that have different opinions is just more from life experience and working in a full-time job, is understanding what their opinion is and where they're coming from, you know, what's their perspective. And also, once you get to know them, and that was kind of a challenge for me first on the council, is sometimes like, okay, is that a joke? Were they serious? Or just to really know, you know, is it, kind of really dig into, you know, what their opinion is, and just be able to listen without reacting, just to kind of more gather the information and, and listen to it. So that's probably the biggest thing is really kind of their perspective, knowing where they're coming from. And as far as working with the council, I had a neighbor, and it wasn't the neighbors that are here, I had a neighbor ask about a candidate, what their, you know, what side of the aisle, and I said, I don't know. It's really not an issue when it comes to that part. It's more just being professional, knowing that we have different values and backgrounds, and if there is a difference of opinion, just sharing it more in education, like, okay, this is why I think that, or help me understand why you think that. And not trying to convince them to change their mind, but what I really like about the council too, is when we do have different opinions, we don't let that stall us. We still make decisions and get items done that are on the agenda. Thank you, Jean.
And now we'll hear from Glenn.
Working productively with others, that's what government does. 12 years ago, I was asked by a, a pillar of the community, who do you want off the council? And I told this particular person, I said, I don't want anybody off the council, but I want to be on the council because I want to be part of the process. I believe, I look for win-win situations with people, and I have always done what's in the best interests of Carver, not what's in Glenn Henry's best interests. I think when everybody sits at this side of the, of the dais, you put all your partisanship aside, and you sit down and you evaluate all the issues before you, and you hear pros and cons of every issue, and then you vote your conscience. There's also the commonality where we can agree to disagree on certain items, but we always move forward because we're always looking at what's in the best interest to move Carver forward. Winning friends and influencing people is a power that, once you can change or sway somebody's opinions, because when you deal with rationality and not with emotions, you can get a lot farther. You always get me.
And now we'll hear from Matt.
I think I have short answers, because she's just like.
I know.
Just kidding, so. So what I know is everyone's sitting up here, obviously, we're all for the city of Carver, right? No one up here is on their own agenda, at least, that's how I feel. So when you're working with others, it isn't, it's important to understand if somebody has another idea, another point of view, is you absolutely have to listen, and you have to get educated on where they're coming from. So I think I would bring that to the table.
All right, now I have closing remarks, and we'll begin with Eric.
All right, well, so we're a small town growing up. We're larger than we were when my family moved to Chaska. We have, I said earlier, three times the population we did in 2000, and most of the commercial development that we've had has occurred in the last three years, better than 90% of it. As we continue to grow, our elected officials need to be fully engaged and rise to the challenges of that growth. My focus will include lifecycle housing, we just talked about that, infrastructure and commercial development, and the preservation of historic downtown and evangelizing historic A word on the city, I, we're fortunate to have really talented, competent city employees, so I just want to go on the record thanking them. They contribute a lot to the success of the city. I know through all of my civic and professional experiences that progress is hard work, deliberation, it's compromise, and consideration of values and opinions of others that may not agree with me. The next step is for me to apply my experience and dedication to the betterment of the community and progress for the city of Carver.
And now we'll hear from Courtney.
All right. The mayor that we choose on November 8th will have just one vote on city council, but as our community continues to grow, it's going to be really important to have a mayor who knows what a mayor does and what they don't do as part of this role. So respectfully, Matt, election integrity isn't something that the city handles. That's a county issue, and I know that you perhaps didn't listen and get educated when Commissioner Matt Urdeman told you that. So that's something, we run the elections, but it's not a citywide issue. You know, I think my focus on the next four years is going to be continued transparency, fiscal responsibility, and really working on smart development. I'm running for mayor because I have the experience, the dedication, and I know that I'm the best person to lead the city of Carver through the next four years. I'm ready and willing to do the hard work that I know being mayor requires. In my monthly newsletter column, I always end by saying, if you have any questions or comments, please don't hesitate to reach out, and I truly mean that. If anybody has any questions or wants to share any thoughts or ideas with my campaign, my website is courtneythe4mayor.com. My email is courtneythe4mayor.com, and my cell phone number is 612-702-7703. I'd be honored to have your next vote as mayor of the city of Carver, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for doing this forum tonight.
Now we'll hear from Matt.
So my experience with running a successful business and managing budgets and working with people every day, I think that's what I bring to the table. I would also work very closely with our sheriff, because we are expanding rapidly to ensure the safety of our community. And I, I would ensure you, managing budgets, that I would be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money. I would treat it as my own, and so that's what I would bring to the table as mayor. I would treat it as my own, um, and so that's what I would bring to the table as mayor.
Now we'll hear from Lori.
Uh, so what, as a council member, what I would continue to work on is, and to focus on is the fiscal responsibility and oversize for infrastructure. I just am really passionate, um, and dedicated to the city of Carver. I love to talk, I love, I love Carver, I love to talk about Carver. I, I actually get energized when I get my packet and get to prepare for a meeting and, and think of what questions to ask. Um, so I wanna continue to represent, uh, Carver and make decisions with the balance of what's right for the residents as well as the city. Thank you.
And now we'll hear from Glenn.
I'm gonna go quick. Uh, first of all, uh, I wanna thank the League of Women Voters for this forum again. It's nice hearing everybody's opinions, um, and, on the issues, and, um, it's a great forum for people that are watching or watching the tape, uh, to actually hear from, uh, some of your elected officials or potential elected officials. Um, I'm running for council again, this, I'm running for my fourth term. I bring experience, steadfast studying of all the issues. I work through each of our, uh, each of our issues, um, logically, uh, methodically, put a lot of thought into them. Um, I take nothing lightly. The future of Carver is bright. We have a lot of growth potential, and right now, it's, it's exciting time to be in Carver. I live at three twenty-sixth Street West, Carver. You can't drive past me now, 'cause it's all under construction, which is kinda nice, 'cause it's a Speedway otherwise, but for the most part, I'm running again, because I always wanna do what's best for Carver. Thank you.
I would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate by League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County. And now for our closing, here is League of Women Voter Eastern Carver County Voter Service Forum Coordinator, Darcia Durking.
The League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County would like to thank you all for coming tonight, and for our online audience for viewing. We would especially like to thank all of the candidates for being part of the democratic process, and for running for office, and being willing to serve our community. Finally, we thank our facility hosts and our league members here volunteering tonight. The league studies issues important to our members and the health of our communities. If you're interested in finding out more about what we do or how you can also make a difference, please pick up a membership brochure at the registration table, or visit us at LWVMN.org. Membership is open to all people. Individual, household, and student memberships are available. You can find out more information about candidates and about voting at MNvotes.gov and Vote411.org. This forum has been recorded, and the link will be available on the League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County Facebook page. Good night, thank you for coming, and remember to vote on November eighth.